Good evening, everyone. We are going to call the City Council for Monday, June 3rd, 2024 to order. At this time, we will start with the prayer, and we're going to be led by Pastor Zach Gibson from True Holiness.
Dear God, in Jesus's name, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this moment. It's time, God, we come to you because we know that you're the one that can give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding on how to govern your people, and take care of the business for the people. So we pray that you'll do just that. I pray that you'll cause us to flourish in what we do. Let this be a prosperous meeting. In Jesus's name, we pray, and we thank you, and we count it done by faith. Amen and amen.
Amen.
We're also going to have Ms. Zion Gibson tonight lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd like to come up.
Thank you.
Here, we have the flag over here. You can lead us. We'll start with you when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, for leading us in that. We're now going to go into item four, and that's public comments. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussion of matters which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up, we have Mr. Otis Story Senior. I should have answered my call. I was in the meeting earlier.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, elected officials, and citizens of Kansas Cankakee. Apologize for that. My name is Otis Story. I'm the new president and CEO at St. Mary's, and I wanted to come here this evening to introduce myself to the elected officials and to representatives of this great city. I've been here for three months, so I apologize for taking so long to get here, but I am very, very excited about having an opportunity to work with a faith-based organization as rich and in history as St. Mary's, that the sisters who founded this great institution over a hundred years ago, who put their hands into the earth here in Cankakee to serve all in need. I am, I am so excited about having the opportunity to continue the legacy of those great women into today's modern world. I believe that we all would trust that without our health, nothing goes forward. We start today with God's grace and good health. So I wanted to take this opportunity, Mr. Mayor, just to say hello again to you. Thank you for your continued support of St. Mary's and elected officials. I look forward to getting to know each and every one of you all on an individual basis, and I would pray that we would work together to continue to lift up the legacy of the sisters who founded this institution over a hundred years ago to serve this great community. So thank you very much for an opportunity to address the city and the city council. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Story. I will say, if you have a chance to sit down with him, we had a little over an hour meeting, and he gave me quite the history lesson and had me on the edge of my seat for over an hour. So we'll still have to get together because I learned more in that last hour about a lot of things about his travels across the United States and a lot of history. So thank you. Next, we'll move on to item five, and that's roll call. City council members?
Jones.
Present.
Noble.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Tully.
Present.
Osingah. O'Brien.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Alon Marshall. Prude.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
We do have a quorum. Next is item 5B, department heads.
Kidwell.
Here.
LaRoche.
Here.
Hubel.
Present.
Sanchi.
Present.
Landwehr.
Present.
Newton.
Present.
Pigash.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Beasley. Hoffman.
Here.
Croweswell.
Here.
Rur Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. We are going to ask for an amendment to the agenda tonight. We do have some information that we need to go over on some collective bargaining agreements in executive session, and Director Croweswell, to honor some of her time tonight, we'd like to move that up a little bit if we can. So I'm looking for a motion to amend the agenda to move item 14D to 7.2, and that'll be right after petitions. So move. We have a motion from Alderman Marzak.
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Prude. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Amendment to the agenda is approved. Move on to item six, the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, May 20th, 2024?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Tully. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's. Any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Minutes are approved. We'll move into items seven, which is petitions. First up is item seven A, items one, two, and three. These will be on first reading only tonight. I'll have Clerk Gall read those into the minutes.
Sure. For A, number one, an ordinance approving an annexation and map amendment to rezone parcel numbers 16-17-17-304-019, 16-17-17-302-017, 16-17-17-302-016, 16-17-17-302-023, 16-17-17-302-022, and 16-17-17-302-013, and 16-17-17-302-001 from C2 County to C2 City, and parcel number 16-17-17-304-020 from R1 County to C2 City. Number two, an ordinance approving a map amendment to rezone parcel numbers 16-17-17-306-013, 16-17-17-306-014, 16-17-17-306-008, 16-17-17-306-012 from C3 to C2, and item three, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a 24-hour convenience store and fuel sales.
As mentioned, these are on first reading tonight. There's a couple more documents that need to come forth to legal to finalize these, so we expect that these would be on final reading at our next meeting on June 17th. However, these have gone through the planning board, and Mr. Hoffman, if you don't mind, could you just give us a quick update of the planning commission's recommendations on these three items?
Be happy to, Mayor. First of all, apologies, Clerk Gall. We didn't have addresses for some of these, so we had to use the pen numbers, so sorry for the long reading there. But yes, so the three items, the first is really annexing the parcels that are along 4552 on the east side of the street between Riverstone Parkway and the old gas station that's up there. Those are currently in the county. We need to bring those into the city. So that's the first item. And then obviously zone them for commercial purposes to accommodate quick trip. The second one is a map amendment changing the zoning from C3 to C2. I'm not really sure how it came about, but all those properties out there, including Walmart, are currently zoned C3, which is our central commercial district. That's designed for downtown, smaller lots, zero setbacks, all those kind of things. This is really a highway-oriented location, so going forward, we want to rezone it to C2 since we're doing all these other things anyway. Let's zone it correctly. So that's what that is, is just rezoning it from C3 to C2. And then the last one is the conditional use for quick trip, which is a convenience store and fueling stations. Those were all recommended for approval by the planning board at their meeting. Quick Trip actually asked for a couple of additional things. They think they need a billboard sign, and they wanted some modifications to their front monument sign, but they didn't have drawings drawn up for those yet, so we asked them to come back with those at a future date when they have drawings for those pieces. And they're also going to have to come back with a plat for the whole thing to consolidate these individual parcels into one parcel, and they've got to draw up a plat of annexation, which is what we're holding up for a couple of weeks till we have that in place. But it's a great project. Planning board was fully supportive of that. There really weren't any particular comments at the public hearing, so I was recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. We do have a representative from Quick Trip here tonight, so if there's any questions from the council, if you have any, we could address them directly with Quick Trip. Okay, hearing none. Just to kind of give you an update also, if you remember, we approved the redevelopment agreement with Quick Trip late last year. That is just getting signed now. We had several, nothing of business substance has changed. It was more all of, I'll call it, legal ayes and ees that needed to be taken care of, and part of it also was the conveyance of the convention center to the city of Cankakee. It was written where that would be done upon building permit being issued. In a lot of municipalities where they build, it takes quite a bit of time to get a building permit. They've had an experience where it's been delayed six months due to a drainage district, I believe, or some things. I've kind of assured them that we'll move pretty quick here in the city and probably move as fast as they want us to move, but was concerned about waiting to get the convention center till that building permit. So when we were at ICSC in Las Vegas, we did meet briefly with Quick Trip. We'd had some phone discussions before and kind of had come to an agreement that once they get all their planning commission items approved by city council, which we're hoping would be, you know, in early July at the next meeting, and then maybe in July there the rest, that they would then convey the convention center, the whole parcel itself, to the city so that we could start bringing that back online and not having any further code violations there. And then when they get their final plat done, it'll be subdivided with the outlet parcel coming along with the convention center. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. We don't believe it requires any additional legal act or legal action or council action at this time, but I want to keep you abreast of what's happening right now is our desire is to move quicker on that, but also giving Quick Trip the amount of time that they need to get all their documentation and all their stuff ready to move forward. So that's an update there if you have any questions. Okay, so those are all on first reading, and we'll bring those back to city council hopefully at the next meeting, June 17th. Hopefully we'll get the extra documentation we need and have final reading on those, these approvals. We'll move on to item 7B.
PB 2024-4-4, an ordinance approving a map amendment to rezone portions of West Station Street, West Merchant Street, South Wall Street, and South Frazier Avenue from commercial to residential zoning.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would interfere with the passage ordinance tonight?
So move.
We had a motion for, with Alderwoman Lewis and a second from Alderman Tully. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Tully. Mr. Hoffman, if you can, this is getting very similar, so, but if you can go ahead and give us an outline here of planning commission's recommendation.
Yes, Mayor, happy to. So this is another in a series of our efforts to better match existing land use with existing zoning. There were a series of properties primarily along West Station between Wall and Small Avenue that were all zoned commercial, but almost all single-family homes. There are a few businesses in there, and we've certainly left any of the existing businesses commercial, but any of the homes we've proposed to rezone to residential to better match the use. We were running into problems like we have elsewhere where people are being challenged with real estate transactions and banks not wanting to lend prop to property that are improperly zoned. So this was driven by a request from a resident. We had a couple of people show up at the public hearing or contact our office, all in support of the proposed rezoning. Planning board was fully supportive of the rezonings in this area and recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Any questions or comments from the city council? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. At this time, we're going to move on to amended agenda, which is 7.2. We do have a need to go into executive session under item 5ILCS122C2, union contracts, items one and two.
Resolution authorizing the execution of the operating engineer's local 399 collective bargaining agreement for the Department of Environmental Services utility, and item two, a resolution authorizing the execution of the lab operator's local 399 collective bargaining agreement for the Department of Environmental Services.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
I heard a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Who is a second? Alderwoman Johnson is a second. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
We are now in executive session.
I just get used to the projects down here.
All right.
And then I notice there's holes in the ceilings.
I got a lot to.
Is there a motion to turn to open session? So move. Motion from Alderman Marzak, second from Alderwoman Johnson. Roll call, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble. Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
We do have a quorum. We do have action resulting from executive session. We're going to go to sixteen one.
A resolution authorizing the execution of the operating engineers' local three ninety-nine collective bargaining agreement for the Department of Environmental Services Utility.
Is there a motion to authorize the resolution of the collective bargain agreement for what we would refer to as local three ninety-nine?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Jones. Are there any questions or comments regarding the collective bargain agreement with Environmental Services Utility? This would be the sewer operations. Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item sixteen point two.
Resolution authorizing the execution of the lab operators' local three ninety-nine collective bargaining agreement for the Department of Environmental Services Utility.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Any questions or comments regarding the lab services collective bargain agreement? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble. Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Okay. A resolution is approved. I'd like to thank Director Crowe as well, Superintendent Newton, our operations manager, McGinnis with the lab services, and Comptroller Kubal for working on these, both these contracts. They're never easy things to deal with, and so I think they did a really good job and got these really done fairly in a quick turnaround, really. It takes some time, so there's a lot on the plate right now. So thank you to all them for getting this done and bringing it to City Council for approval, so. We will now move on to, I got to figure out, we're all over the board here. Thank you. Item eight A, communications.
Item A is the Riverview Historic District is requesting permission to host the Fourth of July Kitty Bike Ride on Thursday, July fourth, twenty twenty-four, from nine thirty a.m. until eleven a.m.
Mayor. Can we combine them?
I was waiting for somebody to take care of me, so I'm going to have Clerk Gall read item B, C, and D also.
Item B, Circa and Art in Soul are requesting a noise permit and street closure of West Merchant Street from Southwest Avenue to the middle of the block before Washington Avenue to host their mural presentation on Saturday, July twentieth, twenty twenty-four, from eleven o'clock a.m. until six o'clock p.m. Item C, the Rotary Club of Kankakee is requesting rental of the gazebo Farmer's Market parking lot and street closure of the two hundred block of South Skyler Avenue, along with Festival Square area around the Depot Fountain, to host Halloween Downtown on Sunday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-four, from five o'clock a.m. until five o'clock p.m. And item D, the Juneteenth Celebration Community Council is requesting permission to host their Freedom Festival Parade and also street closure of East Birch Street from North Hobby Avenue to North Cottage Avenue to host the Freedom Festival on Saturday, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, from twelve o'clock p.m. until eight o'clock p.m.
Is there a motion to combine items eight A, eight B, eight C, and eight D?
So move.
Have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Navarez. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble. Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, oh, eleven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Is there a motion to approve items eight A, B, C, and D?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble. Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
The communications are approved. Next, we're going to move on to item nine, nine A.
Community Development Agency for Monday, May sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Alderman Baron.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee did meet last month on May sixth at six p.m. I've submitted the minutes to the full council. A few things to point out. We heard a presentation from Dr. Montel Crawford, who is the Executive Director of the Kankakee Regional Land Bank Authority. Talked about a summary of the land bank's activities over the past year, especially as he has ramped up. Talked about the successes as well as some of its challenges. One item in particular, the land bank has now successfully obtained a property located at eight thirty-one South Washington. There were tens of thousands of dollars of back taxes on that property. It was turned over to the land bank using a deed in lieu of foreclosure. Land Bank acquired it, wiped the title clean of any back taxes, then sold it to a developer who had promised to rehab the property within twelve months, which is a rule that the land bank puts in place. And I drove by this weekend, and that property is being improved. So that is a very quick and early indication of what this organization and authority can do. However, Dr. Crawford noted that there's a number of challenges that are presented. The United States Supreme Court last year put out a ruling in Tyler v. Hennepin that threw an obstacle into the process of being able to obtain properties in advance of a scavenger sale. There was concern about whether that might cause a due process violation, but it's not directly on point to what our land bank wanted to do, but it just put enough of a cloud that we're continuing to work through what is possible in terms of obtaining properties through, in advance of that county scavenger sale. Alternatively, there's other options for the land bank to acquire properties, foreclosing on liens, particularly municipal liens. We can deed over, we can grant the authority to foreclose on those liens to the land bank authority, which we've done in a number of occasions. Also, you can go through the Circuit Court to have a property declared as abandoned. Both of those processes are pretty time consuming and costly. Dr. Crawford identified that there's a number of different things that they are doing to readjust their strategic plan, their hopes and goals and expectations for the land bank authority. The goal is that ultimately, the land bank would be self-sustainable, that it will receive properties either through abandonment, foreclosure, or deed in lieu, and then is able to sell those properties to interested developers that promise to redevelop in the next ten, twelve months. But it's going to take time to reach that level of self-sustainability. So all, Dr. Crawford made a request, and I think it's been communicated to the city, that they would receive one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city, as well as from the county. So that's something that I know that the committee today, we talked about a little update for that, but I think it's something that'll come up in the future. Ms. Brewer Watson provided the ECDA departmental report. There are more projects that are on the way. Expect a busier year in twenty-four, twenty-five. Samantha Rognowski is the Director of Public Outreach for ECDA, presented on the United Way Day of Action. Hopefully, you're aware, there is now a link available for individuals to sign up as volunteers for each of your awards projects. And then Ms. Brewer Watson provided an update about the conversation around the local continuum of care. Ms. Brewer Watson noted that the previous entity that was administering the Central Illinois Continuum of Care in Bloomington has since said they're not going to do it anymore, which throws a cloud on the possibility for funding for some of our local service agencies. ECDA is continuing to investigate whether we should form our own continuum of care that would cover at least Kankakee County, unlikely to provide services for all nine counties, but potentially the one county or potentially more. That process, though, would take eighteen months, so stay tuned on that. Then we adjourned.
Thank you, Alderman Baron. Next, we'll move on to item ten, Report of Officers. Item ten A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of four hundred thousand, eight hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for the City of Kankakee?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the report of officers. Let's pay the bills in the amount of four hundred thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Any questions or comments regarding the bills for the City of Kankakee? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for the City of Kankakee are approved. Next is item ten B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of three hundred and seven thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and one cent.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for the ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman. Swanson? I paused.
It's that awkward pause. I'll second.
Repeat the name. Sometimes it's just better not to say. We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Any questions or comments regarding the report of officers for ESU? It happens. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check three four nine eight two to Baron Hewitt Oil and check three four nine 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 to Gordon Electric Supply to avoid a potential conflict.
Thank you. Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for Environmental Services Utility are approved. Item eleven is unfinished business. We have none. We'll move on to new business under item twelve, twelve A.
An ordinance amending Chapter thirty-two, Section two thirty-one, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, handicap parking signs established at three eighty-nine South Washington Avenue.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So move.
Have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So move, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item twelve B.
An ordinance authorizing the extension of the city's franchise agreement with Aqua Illinois, Inc., from January first, twenty twenty-three, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Before we get into this, I'm going to defer to in-house counsel, Landware, who worked on this agreement here. It's very similar to what we've had in the past, but if you can kind of go over that in the review for us.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So it's the exact same agreement we've had in the past, but it had expired. Because this agreement's been in place for over twenty years, Aqua, my understanding is, just continued to pay it, and we just need to formalize the agreement retroactive to January first, twenty twenty-three, because it did expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
And this does still include the franchise fee that they've been paying. And comptroller Kubal, you mentioned, I think, that we've continued to receive that payment from them.
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
I believe they did want a longer agreement, but we, Don's advice, we just kept it to a three-year so that we can continue to review the franchise agreements going forward.
Right, we are looking, we're working with a franchise agreement from nineteen ninety-nine. It's still under the old name of Consumers Illinois Water Company. We do, we would like to update that, but because it was for the Arizona signs, it, you know, it basically is still valid, but we wanted to update it. It's just that since it is already expired, not a real good time to start updating and negotiating a franchise agreement. Right now, we just attach the old agreement, which is actually the old ordinance, to the updated ordinance each time. That was done back in twenty twenty, when it expired after the first twenty-year term. Other people do have twenty- and thirty-year franchise agreements with Aqua. We can do that in the future, but this didn't seem like a good time to do that with everything that's going on.
Thank you. Being that this is an ordinance, is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow this for passage tonight?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item twelve C.
An ordinance creating a hotel tax for the City of Kankakee in Kankakee County, Illinois.
This is on first reading tonight only. We want everybody to have time to take a look at this over the next two weeks. We do want to bring this for final reading on June seventeenth so that we can have it enacted in time for the July one collection. I know there's a couple, and I do need to get with corporate counsel, there is a couple of questions still on defining what the actual properties that are being, I'll call it, that could be potentially taxed, and making sure that's very clear in our ordinance. So if you have any questions or comments, we still have time to make those tweaks, so look at this and make sure you're comfortable with it in the next two weeks, and we'll work on that. We have no appointments tonight, so we'll move on to item thirteen, motions and resolutions. Item thirteen A.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Xylem, Inc. Submersible Pump Bid for ESU and the rejection of Thompson Pump and Manufacturing Bid.
So this Superintendent Newton, we had at our Gar Creek about two months ago. It's been a while now, it feels like. We had a, at the time, what we thought could have been a pretty catastrophic situation where our lift station broke down. It literally was within, within probably under an hour of potentially overflowing of sewer waste into Gar Creek. And fortunately, through some of the calls that Superintendent Newton made, they found a pump that was, happened to be going to another site, that they rerouted to Kankakee to prevent any of that overflow spillage. In talking about that, this is something that we hope we wouldn't have to use that often, but this is one of those things that we thought we should have on hand. And this is a, Mr. Newton, if you can kind of explain it for us, it's a two-pump system with a generator that would work and how that would work for our sewer system?
Right, correct. So it's two different sized pumps with a power pack unit to run them. It's got some unique features. It's got some unique features that kind of make it kind of set and forget, that won't clog with the debris that might be in the wastewater. So that's what makes them really attractive to us for a situation such as Gar Creek.
Right now, we're still using, as we're repairing it, we're still using the pump and renting it.
That's correct. We're still renting.
After two months here, so we're kind of sending money out. So this is something we feel we need on hand, hopefully that we don't use. It's also a good device that, quite frankly, if there was another municipality or something that maybe needed a last-minute situation, we would be able to help them out in a situation like that also. But it's one of those things that you hope you never need it, but we need to be able to pull it out of a building within an hour's notice so that we don't violate some EPA regulations and stuff. So there was two bids. The one bid that we are rejecting, they did not meet the specifications of what we requested. It was a much lower bid. It was at like $50,000-some thousand, but it did not meet any of the criteria that we had asked for. And so you have the bid before here, and I don't have it in front of me. What was the total cost of that roughly? Is that $90,000?
$3,000, I believe.
$3,000. And so we're asking to accept this bid, this resolution, to accept the bid to move forward with this.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We already did our executive session, so we will move on to Item 17, City Council Member Comments. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that a week from tonight, we have the June Budget Committee meeting. We'll be discussing the budget as it stands at that point, so please join us if you're able to. Thank you.
Can I add to that also? Well, actually, I'll defer to Comptroller Kubal if you could just talk about Bob Vail and the POBs.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We also will have a presentation that night from Bob Vail, the gentleman that we work with from Bernardi Securities, regarding the second tranche, basically, of the pension obligation bonds that we are looking at doing and how that overlays and what that looks like for the debt schedules and kind of a continuing conversation we've had with the pension bonds. So encourage everybody to come out that night. It's going to be a lot of information, really good meeting.
Alderman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, tomorrow night, on behalf of Chairman Ozeng, we'll be over at Firehouse, what would that be, Chief? Station 6 at 5 o'clock tomorrow. We're meeting public safety. We'll be over there tomorrow at 5 o'clock. Also, I want to thank you again, Mayor, for what the city council presented onto Pastor Howard Wills yesterday, the proclamation that was made. It went very well, and we appreciate all the city. And the event, it went well, and Pastor Wills was pretty happy. Also, we're having a get-together. You know, I'm pretty proud of certain things that go on in the ward. We're having a get-together at the Legacy Banquet Facility for Malia Riley. She's a Yale student, been accepted to go to Yale. And I believe it's Saturday at 11:00 a.m. We're trying to raise finance for her, you know, to go. If whatever you could give, $5, $10, whatever would be appreciated by the family. From 11, like I said, to 3 o'clock, we just want to try to send her off. It's a full scholarship with all of us that's had college kids. You know, it costs a little bit to get there, so you know. We just want to let them know that, you know, we're behind her 100%. And also, just to update, Asbury is going pretty well. You know, I went there the other day, looking nice back there. They're really moving real good over on the east side, getting that assisted living facility going. I believe it's like the host of a $12 million project, so you know, we're pretty proud of that. And also thank Ricky Rockets for taking care of, you know, we did a little fussing, but they took care of the situation that we had over there. And because we never want to be hard on people that come to do business in the city, but we thank them for correcting the issue publicly. And you want to say that because, you know, it was people getting a little nip and tuck, but it was addressed. So thank y'all already in advance, and we'll look forward to seeing everybody again tomorrow.
And real quick, Station 6, Chief, is Washington Avenue? That is over by the, yeah, over by the high-rise just southeast of Bishop McNamara High School. Any other city council member comments? Department head comments? Chief LaRoche?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a few seconds here to recognize one of our past employees, Gina Wood. She was our administrative assistant. Her last day was this past Friday. She put in 40 years with the city. She did a wonderful job with us and for us personally, for DC Hyde and myself. She kept us on our feet, moving in the right direction when we needed some assistance. And all her years' experience actually kept us pointing in the right direction when we needed to be and gave us some well-needed voice of reason sometimes. So with that, you know, she didn't want a big party. She just wanted to go out on her own circumstances, which is nice and quiet. And so we had a little bit of, we took out for lunch, and then we had some cake with Ford in the afternoon with just a couple of people, our personnel. But I did want to recognize, go on record, to say that, you know, show how much we appreciated her 40 years of service with us. And then one more thing, I did send out a, or actually, David did send out an email concerning CPR classes for the older persons. If you would like to sign up, there's a couple of dates there. Please let us know. Send it back to Lieutenant Zacco when you get a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other department head comments? Okay, then we'll move on to Mayor's Update. I just want to thank Alderwoman Swanson for covering the meeting. You set the bar high. I heard it was a nice 25-minute meeting, and so now... I already ruined that tonight, so... They may want you up here a little bit more often and get these meetings done and over with, so... But thank you for covering this. As you know, the city, we sent a team out to the ICSC convention, and it was a really good experience. As I mentioned before, we did meet with QT out there briefly and talked about a couple of things, chasing some other retailers and industries and trying to chase the grocery stores and all. So it's one of those things that we won't know with the fruits and labors that come of it till a later time, but I do know there's a part of discussion that they had was with some of the hotelers out there, and there's still some interest in Kankakee, so that's a positive thing. I'm a big believer in this show. I've been going since 1995, and I can tell you, you don't get something every year, but if you can get one prospect or one deal every four to five years, it's more than worth it in what it'll bring in sales tax and real estate taxes, so... We did talk about QT. We gave an update there. We do have a planning board appointment that needs to be filled. Pastor Robinson, his term was up. I believe at the last meeting, you did approve two of the appointments. They re-upped, but Pastor Robinson declined to do another term. So anyone that's interested in, or if you have any of your residents that might be interested in serving on the planning board, we'd like to fill that position. We are trying to spread out the boundaries a little bit. We did have a good recommendation, but I'll be quite frank. I felt we had maybe four people awful close to each other. We're trying to get it citywide, so there's a diversity and a well-rounded planning board that represents the entire city, so... Maybe in the first ward or seventh ward or fifth ward, those might be some ideal areas to take a look at for an appointment. Want to bring to the attention of the council, the tourism, as we've entered into that agreement, and they're downsizing their office and need for space. They will be, at some point, moving out of their location in the First Trust Bank Building. They would like to stay in the City of Kankakee, and I think we'd like to keep them in the City of Kankakee. So we are looking at them of potentially locating in the Kankakee Depot as a office location for them. Let me know what your thoughts are. And actually, what we're thinking of doing there was still allow us to use the facility the couple of times a year where we might need them to, Merchant Street Music Fest or when Santa Claus comes in at our line wreathing, they would make some space available for us, but it could be a real cool spot where they could come in. They could catch the people coming off the train. It just kind of seems like a nice niche for a tourism bureau to be located at. So I wanted to let council be aware of that. If you have any concerns with that, let me know, but we're still finalizing what that would all look like, but I just want to put that on record for you. And then I just wanted to end with, everybody got that dreaded piece of mail that you don't want to get the last 10 days here. It's been flowing in everyone's box, and that's your real estate tax bill. As elected officials, we don't like them either, obviously. But there is a little bit, as you get those, there's been a lot of comments and questions about, my taxes have gone up substantially, and that is true. If you look at it, and I'll give you a good example of, I'll use my own personal house. The city lowered its tax rate, and if there was no increased assessment or basically the value of your property, my city portion of my taxes would have gone down about 17.5% or about $440. But in turn, my city portion of my taxes, I believe, went up about $289. It's because my house has been assessed at a higher value along with most of the properties in the City of Kankakee. There was just an article in Cranes this past week that the City of Kankakee, and this is nationwide, is number two for the highest increased value of property values in the country. Fond du Lac, Wisconsin, was number one. Kankakee was number two. I have said, now, part of that is, is we experienced quite a dip from the recession. If you also remember, we were on a top-10 list back, I believe, in 2012 of a city that would never recover because our property values had plummeted so much. And again, Comptroller Kubal could talk to this about how it was almost a third of our EAV disappeared, it seemed like overnight. So we were at a real low area, and now we've escalated at a very high rate. So that gives us a percentage of over 20% of why we're so high on a national level, but that's a good thing. We want our properties to be worth more. When you buy a house or you buy a commercial property, the goal is, you hope someday that you pay it off and that your property is maybe worth at least double for what you paid for it 20 or 30 years ago. So when you have a higher-priced value property, you're going to pay more in taxes. So while we do everything we can here at the City of Kankakee to keep the levy low, to reduce our tax rate, one thing that we don't control is the assessment or the market value of the properties. But again, that's a positive thing for Kankakee. This higher EAV level allows us to have a lower tax rate, allows us to have some more funding to do some things. And hopefully, in the end, when you go to sell your property, it's going to be a positive thing for you. But I did want to address that, that people have said, well, you said the taxes are going to go down, and mine have gone up. They have. And again, we're only one portion of it. We can only control the city. We can't control all the other taxing bodies. But even, I looked at it right here, again, I used my example, is my taxes went up $229 because my property was assessed more. The county had a negative levy. They basically did not have a, it was below 0.0. Even on that, my county taxes went up $20.91, even with a negative levy. It's because my property is worth more money. That's something that we can't control, but it's actually, in my opinion, it's a positive thing. So I just wanted to share that with you tonight. Just even going back, I did a spreadsheet here of the last eight years of the levy in the City of Kankakee. Of those eight years, six of the years, we've had an increased levy. Again, remember, our insurance goes up each year. We have union contracts that we just did tonight. Those go up with escalations, including our employees. The cost of goods, whether it's buying a police car, whether it's buying a paperclip, whether it's getting repairs done, those all costs go up. So we end up, do, asking for a little bit money, more money each year, because that's just like everything else that we face with inflation. But if you look over the last eight years, our average levy has been about 4.6%. I did remove out of that equation 2018 because at that time, our levy was minus 23.3%, and that was a direct result of the 2% sales tax we put in place that year to fund our pensions and reduce our property taxes in the city by 40%. So that's kind of a weird statistic that's out there. In 2019, it was also minus 1.4, and that was due to some debt falling off the books and a little bit of residual value from the 2% sales increase. But what I wanted to go to is, if you look at the increases, it averages about 4.6% over the last eight years. In 2022, we did 1.1%, which, if you look at that, that's 76% less than the average.